Good morning, everyone. We are convening the Committee on Labor and Government Operations. It is Thursday, March 16th, 2023, 9:33 a.m. in Conference Room 309. First up on the agenda, we have SB 193, SD 1, relating to the State Fire Council. I'm going to ask all testifiers to try to limit your testimony to about two minutes out of respect for other testifiers after you. And if you do get disconnected on Zoom, we will try to reconnect you, but no guarantees. All right, first up, SB 193, SD 1, relating to the State Fire Council. We've got the Department of Land and Natural Resources coming in in support. Are we on Zoom?
That's fire.
That's fire, yeah. Okay, looks like DLIR is not here. State Fire Council in support. Oh, you're muted, or something's wrong. Do we have audio for him? Can you hear us? Can you give a thumbs up if you can hear us? Can you give us a thumbs up if you can hear us?
A little higher.
He might be giving a thumbs up in... All right, let's see if we can get his audio working, since he is the last testifier on this measure. While we're waiting, anyone in person to testify about this measure? Anyone else on Zoom to testify about this measure?
No one on Zoom.
Okay.
Yes, test.
Okay, okay, we got your audio working. Go ahead.
Sorry, were you speaking to Gary Lum?
Yeah, we can hear you now, so you can go ahead and testify on SB 193.
Okay, well, thanks Chair Marioshi, members of the committee, Gary Lum, for the State Fire Council. We're standing on the written testimony submitted and are available for questions.
Okay, thank you. No one else here to testify. Members, any questions? Okay. Let's move on to SB 360, SD 2, relating to family leave. First up, we've got DLIR with comments.
Good morning, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, Representative Capella, Jay Bhutai for DLIR. We stand on our testimony, offering comments. As this measure may help Hawaii move forward in properly planning for the implementation of a paid family leave program, we do not have the capacity to undertake this effort on its own, so we're seeking the flexibility to contract out portions of the study and want to ensure sufficient resources are supplied to carry it out, especially in light of other current and prospective responsibilities. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii with comments on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom.
Not present on Zoom. Stonewall Caucus, present in person? Okay. Next up, we have HSTA in person with comments.
Aloha, chairs and members of the committee. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of Oso Tui Jr., President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. The Hawaii State Teachers Association respectfully offer comments on Senate Bill 360, SD 2, relating to family leave, and we ask that you please revert it back to its original version. We do not need another study, or we already have two studies that were done. What we need is to implement this bill. We should join the other states that have paid family leave. And the reason for this, Hawaii's aging population, we need families to help our elders for when they are ill, and our members and families need to take off in order to care for their older families. And basically, what I'm saying is we need paid family leave. Thank you very much. Bye.
First time someone's actually said bye to me. That's great. All right. Next up, Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committees. Thank you for hearing this bill. I know in prior hearings, it's been changed into a study, and as in our testimony and other testifiers will say, two very comprehensive studies were done since 2017, so I encourage you to look at it. If the state is not ready to immediately implement, then I urge you to at least set the ball rolling. Set up a working group, set up a board of blue-ribbon experts to move us towards paid family leave on a tight timeline, and then we can get there. But kicking the can down the road, it's just, you know, something we've been trying to get paid family leave passed for many years. So a lot of folks are here with their children to talk to you about their personal stories, so I'll let them do that. But thank you for hearing this bill, and I hope you can move it on.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Workers Center in with comments.
Chair Marioshi and Vice Chair Garrett and Representative Capella. My name is Serge Alquabilla, Executive Director for the Hawaii Workers Center. Just again, thank you for taking the time to hear this bill, and I do want to offer the following comments. You know, when my son was first born, he's eight years old now, but when he was first born, I was fortunate enough to work for an organization where I had, we had paid family leave, and I was able to take eight weeks off. And it was such a big help for my wife, you know, after giving birth. And it was that time where I was able to bond with my son. You know, that's time that I'll never get back, and I just really appreciate that. I had the opportunity to do that with my son. And, you know, I just, I urge you to, you know, we provided comments, and just to revert the original, the language of the bill back to its original version, and that, you know, if another study is needed, I believe the state can chew gum and walk at the same time by, you know, doing a study and implementing it at the same time. I don't feel like we need to wait for another few years where paid family leave is only just for the privileged few. It should be for all of us. Thank you again, Chair and Vice Chair and Representative Capella, for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the testifiers we have signed up today, but I see a lot of shirts in the audience. Does anyone else want to come up and testify in person? Please.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and committee members. My name is Joelle Edwards. I'm from the island of Kauai. I come to you today with HCAN, and HCAN speaks, and also as an employer and a former person who used Family Medical Leave Act when my mother was ill and actually dying in another state. Had I not had that opportunity to maintain my employment status and use that, I probably wouldn't have been able to have her in my home during her last days of hospice. I also, as an employer in another state, had the ability to watch my employees benefit from using Family Medical Leave Act, even if that was welcoming a newborn, adopting a newborn, or caring for an ill family member. As an employer here in the state and on Kauai, I see the benefit. Most of my employees are young working mothers. We pay a working wage, which is our goal, but childcare is an issue. And sick kids are an issue, and we have one that has a very ill child. So personally, we allow that, but wouldn't it be great if other employees around the state had that? So I urge you to take it into consideration and get the ball rolling quickly. Mahalo.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify in person about this measure? Please.
Aloha. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Chair Marioshi and Vice Chair Garrett and Representative Capella. My name is Kristin Sully. I'm a parent and community leader. And I am also here with HCAN and the Hawaii Working Families Coalition. Shortly after the birth of her second child, I found myself in a deep, dark depression. The perinatal sadness and anxiety I suffered for most of my pregnancy returned with a vengeance, along with rage, hopelessness, and memory loss. I was extremely sleep deprived, and one weekday morning while nursing our newborn son, I told my husband I did not think I was going to live to the end of the day, because I was trying to figure out a way to unalive myself. His response still chills me to the bone. "I have to go to work." And he walked out the door and left me alone with our babies. Somewhere around eight months postpartum, or somewhere around eight months pregnant, during my pregnancy, I was diagnosed at risk for a condition that put my health and my baby's life at risk for a miscarriage. According to Postpartum Support International, one in seven mothers and one in 10 dads suffer from postpartum depression. The money we were spending by trying to afford nannies and additional care for my, at the time, one-year-old son, added to our depression and increased my stress. After hearing, after my husband's company heard that we could not afford to take FMLA, which is an unpaid family leave, within two weeks, he was fired from his job for not performing at 100%. My husband now sails four to six months out of the year. I'm sorry, six to eight months out of the year, so our children only see my husband about four to six months out of the year now, and my children are five and four years old. Paid family leave means lowering the risk of losing a job, retirement money, sick days, vacation days. It means employee benefits from productive, well-rested, competent employees who feel valued, and it evens playing field for small business owners who don't have, who don't have to pay for family leave. It means spouses can support...
So that's been two minutes. If you could summarize your testimony.
Thank you so much. It means spouses can secure support too, and families can stay healthy and intact. No one should ever have to choose between loved ones and a paycheck. I support this in its original form. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one second here. Please come on.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I want to stand on my testimony in support of this bill, but I wanted to make one comment. If we learned anything from COVID-19 and three years of a pandemic, is that we need a system where parents can care for sick children and adults can care for their parents that are ill at home, where they can be safe. We were very lucky that the schools closed and people were able to work remotely. That may not happen again, and certainly families that experience that have no safety net. So this bill needs to be passed, and we need to start implementing it. I was on the Commission on the Status of Women when one of those studies was done, and I see Debbie, who worked on the study. It was an in-depth study, and it was ready to be implemented at that time. And it went to another, it went to study. This is, that would have been the fifth time that it had been studied. And this has been, frankly, people have been saying this bill has been studied to death, and it's time to implement it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else here in person to testify? And if you did not submit written testimony, do we need their names?
Aloha, Keopu Rilitz. I'm here in my personal capacity today. I'm going to try to make it brief and quiet, since I finally got him to sleep. I just wanted to mention that I had my firstborn in 2016. And in the lead-up, while I was pregnant, in the lead-up to giving birth, my husband and I had to decide, is my husband going to get a new job and put most of his paycheck to childcare? Or is he going to just forego that paycheck? And we made the impossible decision that my husband would stay home and work in the house with the child. And so we forewent one paycheck. What that meant was that I had to make two paychecks. And so I worked two jobs, and because there was no true paid family leave program in Hawaii, I was back at work within four weeks. That was the only way that my family was going to be able to afford medical insurance. And when I say I was back at work, it was not only in a state office building, working a full-time job, it was also working a part-time job. So I would just want to mention that that was our experience with our first child, and since 2016, there have been two studies, and I've had two more children. We still don't have paid family leave, and so I'm urging you to do something more than a study, because we know what the studies say, we know how to do this, at least to start moving the ball forward. Thank you very much for your time. Mahalo.
Thank you. Anyone else here to testify in person?
Aloha. My name is Mai Hall, and I'm here as a personal capacity. Mahalo for hearing my testimony, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. Seven years ago, my husband joined the military. And as we know, military has great benefits: paid family leave, family medical leave, all kinds of fun things to do. However, when my husband left for training for a year, that was probably the worst year of my life. I, with my two children, was in and out of the hospital for the year, in and out. Long, intensive care stays. So when he was gone, there was nobody to take care of my children while I was in the hospital. My mother, luckily, she has a job as well. However, her job only gave her family medical leave, unpaid leave, to secure her job, so she had to take off to take care of me, her daughter. That worked out for the year. However, I remember the finances being so tough that my mom had to go to the bank to take out a loan to pay her mortgage to take care of me while I was in the hospital. I know many families do that, and it's really not fair for us to take out personal loans to support our families, to go back on SNAP, WIC, and TANF to support our families, and that's what our families are doing at this moment. I remember going back on SNAP in order to take care of my children, because I did not have the paid family leave that my job could have afforded me. It is time to bring paid family leave to Hawaii, to our citizens, to our residents, to take care of our children, and to take care of ourselves personally. Mahalo.
Anyone else here to testify in person? Anyone on Zoom to testify on this measure?
Not on Zoom.
Okay. Members, any questions? Representative.
For DLIR? Thank you, Director. Can you explain to me what a procedural manual is and what would creating one accomplish? Also, this measure doesn't currently require DLIR to work specifically with family leave advocates and experts to create the procedural manual. So if this bill does pass, would those advocates be included? Or would those advocates be excluded from the process of creating that manual?
No, we would want to include all the stakeholders as much as possible, because I think the more information, you know, I think at the end of the day, it's going to be better for the program.
Can you explain what in your idea of a procedural manual, what it is?
Let me invite our...
Thank you, Representatives. Joanne Videnhar, Disability Compensation Division Administrator. So thank you for that question. Procedure manual, in our eyes, is a step-by-step path that kind of outlines how we will get to implement this family leave act or a family leave program. Currently, the state does not have, we have Hawaii family leave, and we have TDI. And so we need to look at what programs are in place and how to get us to the next step. So we really feel that there's a gap, so that procedures manual will give us hopefully a step-by-step on that path so that we can implement such a program. Hopefully, that helps.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
However, though, I do want to note, in your testimony, you folks allude to the fact that this may not actually accomplish the goal. Chair, one more question, if I may?
Go ahead.
For HCAN, Nicole Wu?
Aloha again.
Aloha. Thank you for your work on this issue. I know that, like many of the advocates in this room, you've also been working on this for many, many, many years. In your testimony, you noticed that, I noted that you're in support of the current vehicle, but you're also asking for an amendment that would establish a task force like the one that was proposed in 2017. Can you explain the 2017 task force idea to the committee and why it was suggested as a possible step towards launching an actual comprehensive paid family leave program?
No, thank you for that question. After the 2017 study was done that Amy Monk alluded to when she was on the Commission for the Status of Women, we had the 2018 legislative session. During that session, both labor chairs at the time, Senator Takuna and Representative Johansson, were trying to push forward paid family leave, and they came up with this idea of a very comprehensive implementation board, they called it. They picked folks and they, from all different places, whether it's employers, labor unions, experts, paid family leave advocates. They put them on a timeline with strong deadlines to step-by- to step by step, put together, figure out all the details of the program, and get it implemented. It also had appropriations to start the fund that would pay for paid family leave, and it also had funding for DLIR to chair this implementation board. So I encourage you to take a look at that, because those two labor chairs did a lot of work to come up with the idea, so it's a good starting place. And the difference between that and the study is that it actually would get us to paid family leave at the end of a couple of years.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I will also note that when I was first elected, the manual that we were given as an idea of what studies looked like was actually that study on our desk when we first got elected. Thank you, Chair.
Yep. Pleasure.
DLIR, please. Morning, Director. In your testimony, you note you currently have 19 FTEs to administer the various programs currently under your jurisdiction. If we do move toward a full paid family leave model, how many FTEs do you anticipate you might need?
Kristin is, she's been involved with this under DLIR.
Good morning, Chair Matoyoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, and members of the committee. Currently, the division that we're referring to is the Wage Standards Division. They only have 19 FTEs at this point. If we're looking at a full, well, it would depend on what kind of program, but at its max, we're looking, like, if we're looking at a full social insurance program, we estimate we would need over 100 employees. Full-time employees.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, I'm sorry, may I ask another question?
Oh, yeah. Any other people who haven't asked a question, want to ask a question first?
I have one.
Go ahead.
I forget your name. Can you-
Amy.
Amy, can you please come up?
I'm not going to answer your question.
Maybe someone can. On a family leave, how much days or weeks are you guys looking at?
I'm going to refer to Debbie. Can you answer that? Debbie actually worked on this study.
Okay, another question. You did a lot of study on it, and based on the, not you did a lot of study, but you always went into studies, as you said earlier. What results did you have after the studies?
The proposal, as I recall it, was a paid family leave insurance plan, and people would pay into it a dollar a week, and for that, they would be able to receive payment, and it was on a sliding scale. So the higher your income, the less you would get. The lower your income, you would get the full amount, so that people at the lower end of the salary scale would be able to get enough wage replacement to be able to take time off.
So when you say people, the employee that is working, put a dollar into their paycheck for the leave?
It would take a dollar out of their paycheck and put it into an insurance plan. And I think that was the objection, was that it was called insurance, and people were afraid that it would be expensive. They didn't read the details.
Thank you. Anybody know about the days, looking two weeks?
Debbie, do you know?
One week, one month?
Deborah Zeisman from Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks. The way it was modeled in the study, I think that's, I think, the discussion for the implementation board, but I would say the national standard at the moment is 12 to 16 weeks, and also allowing for employees to take it in partial chunks. So that is sometimes when there's caregiving needed, like, you might need a week off in one month, and then you're going for, say, if someone is doing cancer treatment on the continent, right? You need a week to take your loved one for cancer treatment, then you need a week, say, the next month to go, right? So that they're allowed that 12 to 16 weeks, but it could be spread out. That is the most flexible. But I think that is some of the discussion for the modeling. I believe in 2017, it was modeled in 16 weeks, if you recall? I could have to pull it up.
12 to 16 weeks per employee to take leave?
Correct. So it is for caregiving. If you look at other states, you have to have that validated with medical verification, right? So you can't just say, I want to take a day off and go. This is, again, for birther adoption of a new baby, this is for a serious medical issue in the family where you need to be doing caregiving. So other states, right, I know fraud has come up, but again, it is with doctor verification. You are doing caregiving, you need to take your husband to, is going through hospice or cancer treatment. So it is, but the national standard now, so New York, Washington State, California, DC, there's many states now implementing this type of safety net program is 12 to 16 weeks, right? So the idea is also that all employees need it, and it is taken a few times in your lifetime. People do not have a baby every single year, you don't have a parent in hospice every single, right? It's taken a few times as a safety net so that you can continue getting partial pay while you take that time off, and then you return to your job. Otherwise, now what we see is folks wind up quitting or getting fired lots of times. When they take the leave. Yep.
Dr. Bella, did you have another question?
Yes, Chair. For Nicole Wu, HCAN speaks. So we've just heard that it's going to take about 100 employees to make a social insurance model happen. Can you explain how other states have done this? Because other states have enacted, we're not, this is not new. We're actually late to the ball, as usual. Can you explain how other states have done this? Because I'm positive that they don't need 100 employees in order to make this social insurance model happen. It's the setup initially, and then the consistency as the years go by.
Right. So again, if you wanted to look at the study from 2017, a national expert actually came to Hawaii for three weeks. She went to DLIR, she looked at their computer systems, and she came out with a, like, very detailed implementation plan. And she said, we will need, you know, five FTEs to set it up, we'll need three FTEs to run the program. I don't remember the exact numbers, but it was not anywhere close to 100. And this is based on the fact that she goes to all the different states that have paid family leave, looks at what works there, came here, and literally figured out how we would do it here in Hawaii. In my memory, Deb, was it like 10? It was a reasonable number, but it definitely wasn't five times the current staff in that department, which just seems like a lot, but-
Thank you very much.
Take a look at the study.
I would implore DLIR to take a look at the study.
You know, I will note that the 2019 study pointed out, I think, 22 FTE positions, so not 100, but more than 12. Who knows what happened in those two years? Any other questions, members? Okay, I've got a bunch. DLIR first? So I'm assuming DLIR has had a chance to look at, and I, you know, I respect that you are new to the position, Director, but I am assuming that your department has looked at the 2017 and 2019 studies. I believe the $1 a week cost that keeps getting quoted in testimony and from other individuals was from the 2017 study. The 2019 study looked like it had a different cost structure. It looked at places like California, which has an employee-only contribution method, 1%, which would be about $250 a year for a minimum wage employee currently in Hawaii. I'm wondering if you have any concept of what kind of cost to the employee there would be under the original version of this bill, which I believe is a roughly 50/50 split between employee and employer?
Thank you. Put a question, Chair, but, you know, the $1, I think we believe is, you know, our estimate is that it's low, because it doesn't consider the administrative costs. And that's why we, you know, if there's a study, we want to be the, we want to be the lead rather than a third party.
So if the state did run it itself, what kind of cost would you expect the employee to pay? It could be week, month, year, I mean, I don't care about the breakdown, but could you give me some kind of ballpark of that?
We don't have a question.
And my concern is that the employee will be paying too much. The $1 a week, I agree, seems very low. And, you know, the 2017 study is six years ago, it's been a little while. I don't want employees paying fairly large amounts to support this program, but I'd like your opinion on what it would cost them.
Yeah, we don't have a, we'll get back. We'll get back to you, Chair.
Okay. So I'll be right with you.
It's, it depends on the makeup of the program and the employee contribution.
Yeah, but for the original version of this bill is what I'm looking at right now. I'm not saying that this is like the end-all, be-all, or that it won't change, but I'm just wondering for the original version of this bill, what kind of cost it would be for employees generally? Yeah. So you guys can get back to me on that. The 2019 study also suggested about a three-year implementation period. Is that practical in your minds?
Yeah, I think we can, we can, yeah, we can get it done in three years.
Okay. And do you think you could do it with 22 employees?
Yeah, yeah, not if we're paying out claims like, it would be similar to the UI. So 22 employees, I don't think would be sufficient.
I'm not sure this is similar to UI, though. I mean, why would you, why would you, why are you basing the employee count on UI? Do you want to come up?
Sorry, thank you. For the 22 employees, we need, still need to look at eligibility, kind of like we do with TDI, if their eligibility requirements are met. But then we do have to pay out claims, which the division currently, right now, does not pay out claims, and so we don't have the staff to even do those responsibilities, so...
If we theoretically stood up a program, would it be housed under a new division, or would it be housed under an existing division, do you think?
That was a question that we had, because it really doesn't fit into the existing divisions. And so to look at another division, and that was kind of, I guess, the idea of this Procedures Manual, as to do a full assessment. I know that a study's been done and a lot of work has been put into place, but I think that from our perspective, there's things that were missed, and so it's not what the industry is doing. We do have the discussion that was social insurance, is there opt-in, is there opt-out, those types of nuances to a program, but to look at where it should fit in the department. And there's nothing set up. It is a little bit different, absolutely, than unemployment insurance.
The 2019 study suggested a different division as well, so I'm a little concerned about mashing it into the same one. Okay, thank you.
So that timeframe would give us that opportunity to do that. Sorry, thank you.
Understandable. Nicole, do you want to go up?
Thank you for acknowledging me. I just wanted to clear up that $1 a week, and this is actually probably going against my testimony, but that $1 a week was based on a model where we would keep the present TDI system. So when women have a child, they would still be under TDI. There are, we have seen this kind of thing happen in some other states, and it becomes very confusing to workers. They don't know who to apply to, it's two different programs, two different systems. So from those lessons, the current bill in its original form actually puts everything together. So it would be a little more expensive than the dollar a week from 2017. And we actually are in touch with the same experts who did the studies back then. They are now with the U.S. Department of Labor under the Biden administration, and they have agreed to try to find some time to help us out. They're very interested in what's happening here in Hawaii. So again, you know, we're trying to dot all our i's and cross all our t's, so I wanted to be very honest with you about, you know, your instinct that the dollar a week is too low. It's because it was a slightly different bill, or a different bill in terms of pregnant women giving birth.
And that, please stay up there. So that does kind of make sense. TDI here is totally employer-funded as well.
It's private insurance. Every employer has to go out into the market and buy their own TDI insurance plan. And a few years ago, I remember talking to some small business owners, and I said, what if we got rid of TDI and it just became a payroll deduction like social security? We had a paid family leave program. And they were like, that'd be great, because we don't, especially small business owners, they don't like having to do this, like, additional private insurance plan just for TDI, which is what they have to do here. And as I said, we have seen in New York where they have two different systems, it's just super confusing for workers, and it's duplicate of work.
I don't think we'd want to do another system on top of TDI. That's interesting. Thank you for-
So in a way, if we were to merge TDI into paid family leave, we would be saving employers the TDI premiums.
We would be saving them premiums, but they would be paying in paid family leave, but that might offset itself. So I mean, I'm not sure there would be any additional. I'm curious as to the additional impact to the employer if we were to mash them together and get rid of TDI, but implement some kind of paid family leave program. I'm not going to put the burden on you, but maybe DLIR could try to figure that out. If we got rid of TDI and we went with the SB 360 version of the split, what kind of impact that would have on employers?
And we do have the Department of Labor folks promising to help us look at that, but we know that larger insurance pools are cheaper than smaller ones. And right now, with a privatized system, tiny little insurers are stuck with more expensive policies than if the whole state were in one large pool.
Yeah, that makes sense. So my original question to you was going to be, back in 2017, you talked about a lot of work being done by the previous labor chairs, and I wasn't even here then, so I missed that. It sounded like they laid out a timeline and implementation steps. What happened?
In the last hearing of the session, we were told that study wasn't done by people from Hawaii, we need another study. And that's the bill that went into conference, and that's the bill that came out of conference. So immediately after the big study, the legislature at the last minute changed the bill into another study.
Okay, that's the birth of the 2019 study.
That's right. Which was not done by people in Hawaii.
Yeah, I noticed. This original SB 360 version, it suggests a split, correct me if I'm wrong, I might have misread the bill. I believe it suggests a split between employers and employees in an even kind of a matching system. I know other states have 2/3, 1/3, like Washington, or completely employee-paid-for by, like California.
That's right.
What would you consider the best method here for implementation?
I actually think it's something that, you know, whether it's this Implementation Board, for example, with hash-out, right? You have different interests. I used to work at an economic policy think tank, and the fact is that even when it's split, you know, it tends that employers tend to just take it from the employees anyway. So, you know, technically, it's not a huge difference in terms of who pays it, but in terms of how people perceive the program, I think it's important to get that balance right. And that's why different states have landed in different places, because there have been negotiations where people decide it should be an equal split, or it should land mostly on the employees. I don't think any state puts it all on the employers.
Yeah, no state puts it all on the employers, but are you saying that if it's a split, then the employers would just pay them a little less and then-
I mean, that's literally what the economic research shows, which, again, is probably not the best for my argument, but I mean, that's the honest answer.
I appreciate you being honest. I mean, I would hold it against you otherwise.
I might get in trouble, but...
Okay, thank you. DLIR, I've got one more question for you folks, and that has to do with, are there any collective bargaining issues for this, if we were to implement this for state employees, or is that, am I just way off base here?
Is there, come again?
Is there any collective bargaining issue in providing this benefit to state employees?
There would be, Chair.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else have any other opinions on collective bargaining in this room that are left? HSTA, do you have any ideas on this? No? Okay. Members, any other questions on this bill? Okay. All right, thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Let's move on to SB 435, SD1, relating to public works. First up, we've got- First up, we've got DLIR in support.
Thank you, Chair. Jade Bhutaipur, DLIR. Uh, we stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have General Contractors Association of Hawaii with comments.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair. Members of the committee, GCA will stand on this written testimony, offering comments and available for any questions. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii Operating Engineers Industry, in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Danny Kupchoy, on behalf of the Stabilization Fund PAC, I will stand on our testimony in support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We also receive testimony and support from the Hawaii State AFL-CIO. Anyone else here to testify in person or online on this measure? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, let me just make sure I didn't have any other questions. Okay. All right. Seeing none from me either, we will move on to SB 576, SD3 relating to government. First up, we've got DAGs in support.
Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, members of the committee, Mike Arakaki from the Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand by the testimony submitted by our comptroller. The subject matter expert on this, uh, was not able to make it due to an emergency. But I'll be happy to take whatever questions you have and note it down and get back to you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Um, anyone else here to testify on this matter in person or online? Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to SB 811, SD2 relating to demographic data. First up, we've got Department of Education with comments.
Aloha, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, members of the committee, Colleen Matsumoto testifying on behalf of the Department of Education. The department stands on its written testimony with comments on the measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Yeah, thank you. Now, next up, we have University of Hawaii. Well, university must be popular. University of Hawaii with comments. That's, that's for you.
Oh, wow, honor.
Don't, don't disappoint.
Lot of pressure now. Uh, good morning, Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, members of the committee. My name's Alan Rosenfeld. I'm the Associate Vice President for Academic Programs and Policy at the University of Hawaii System. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to testify today. We respectfully request if the bill becomes law that, um, the legislature provide an effective date of 2025 or later to allow for implementation. Specifically, we contract with vendors who run, who manage the admissions applications for the students. And we would need to populate, work with the vendors to populate the applications to include the new ethnicities required under the bill. Uh, other than that, we stand by our written testimony and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so all the testifiers we have to sign, have signed up today. Anyone else here to testify on this measure in person or online? DLIR.
Uh, Chair, I apologize. Uh, we, we submitted testimony, but for some reason it didn't make it. But we stand on our testimony in support of the intent and offering comments and we'll give you a hard copy of our testimony. And primarily, the, the reason why we have concerns is because of the fragility of the mainframe systems. It's a mainframe base and, you know, so we would not be able to implement by July 1, 2023. But, you know, but we're making sure the capability is built into the modernized UI program that currently is in the RFP base. Uh, in fact, we just released the RFP on last Friday. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Director, you, you did submit your testimony, but just no one checked out that you were going to testify. That's all. No problem. Anyone else here to testify on this measure in person or online? Okay, members, any questions on this measure? Okay, I do have a question for, uh, DLIR. Well, first of all, UH proposed a 2025 date. I understand that UI implementation might take three to four years, so you would want, I'm assuming even 2025 is too soon for you.
That's correct.
So what would be a practical date for, for you?
I mean, everything according to plan and, you know, like I said, uh, we just released the RFP and no protest. I mean, because we're looking at, uh, you know, doing, you know, demos and, and best and final offer. And then hopefully we make an award in the fall of this year and then start the project, uh, the, the end of the year. So look at, you know, three years. But, uh, you know, give some margin for error, uh, you know, so hopefully if everything according to plan, you know, we, we'd be, you know, 2026 timeframe.
So 2026, 2027-ish?
Yes.
And, and this new UI system, after you upgrade it, will it be able to handle this?
Yes.
Okay. So DLIR, one more time. Um, in your testimony, you said that you couldn't compel the collection of this data. But the underlying bill seems to be just asking that when you try to collect this data, that you ask for these, this kind of more demographic breakdown. Um, I'm assuming that you have no, no problem with that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have any issues with mixed race, uh, implementation? Because I, I know this asks, you know, specific races, um, and it kind of gives the, the whole breakdown. Oh, I'm sorry. This was DHS's testimony. Is DHS here? Okay, or UH? Uh, you folks had the same testimony. If you could come up. I know you mentioned that there were issues on how to categorize mixed races. I, I think you folks had a framework, um, where if someone checked Native Hawaiian and some other demographics, it would, it would put Native Hawaiian to the top. Uh, think, things like that. How effective is this? I mean, is, and, and could, do you think it'd be easy for other departments to implement?
Uh, thank you. Um, it's, I don't think it would be difficult. I, I can only imagine what it would be like for other departments. Um, it's very helpful for us, for the university, because, um, you know, the eligibility for Title III federal money is dependent on the population of Native Hawaiian students who want to capture as many as possible. Um, so if somebody checks Hawaiian and Chinese, for example, they'll be counted as Hawaiian. But we also have categories of mixed race, mixed Asian, because Hawaii is such a diverse, you know, um, island state.
Do you, do you keep track of, uh, I hate to put it so mathematically, but, you know, percentages of, of what race someone is? I mean, I know I'm, you know, one-eighth of, you know, and all that. I mean, do, do you folks have that option, especially with Native Hawaiian?
Right. So it's, it's self-reported. So, um, it's up to the, the student to self-identify. And we don't ask them for percentages. They can check one box and they can check multiple boxes. And after that, we use the, um, prioritization system to assign them to the appropriate category.
Okay, so someone who is, you know, three-quarters Native Hawaiian would be in the same bucket as someone who is 1/32 Native Hawaiian?
Correct. If they check that on the application, admissions application, for example, correct.
Does that skew demographic data when you're trying to analyze though?
Um, so there are different types of, so for example, when we do federal reporting under iPads, they have a different categorization system. And the, those, um, many of our students who qualify as Native Hawaiian or classified as Native Hawaiian in the UH prioritization policy do not, um, count under the iPads categorization. So, uh, and because of that, we've, what I've found, and if I speak from my own experience, is that in some of the federal data, the iPads data, the assumed demographic makeup, uh, so the percentage of underrepresented minorities as defined by federal standards grossly misrepresents the student body of UH.
That's, that's kind of my concern. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, members? Okay, let's move on to SB 1082, SD2. Uh, we've got DAGs in support.
Chair Matayoshi, Vice Chair Garrett, member of the committee, Mike Arakaki from the Department of Accounting and General Services. We stand by the testimony submitted by the comptroller and available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to testify on this measure? Anyone online?
No answers.
Okay, members, any questions? Exciting parking bill? Nope? Okay. Moving on to the last bill on the agenda, SB 1135 relating to procurement. Oh, we do have a person to testify. Ryan Sakuda in support.
Good morning, Chair. Vice Chair, members of the committee, Ryan Sakuda on behalf of the GCA of Hawaii. So we're in support of this measure. Um, we agree that the system should deter frivolous appeals. However, we believe that legitimate appeals are part of a healthy procurement system. It's essential that the procurement code promote fair and ethical procurement. So the purpose of this bill is to adopt the safeguard language in place that the, all the other states, uh, use to prevent the chilling effect of deterring legitimate appeals on large projects when they have a bond required. So the opposition to this measure last year said that the law is new and we need to wait until we have proof that there would be a reduction in administrative appeals on large projects. Um, well, we told everyone what would happen and that's exactly what happened. Uh, we warned that there would be no appeals on large projects and we specifically called attention to projects valued at $10 million or more. There were zero appeals in 2022 on large projects. In fact, there was only one, uh, administrative appeal that was actually decided by OAH on its merits in 2022. And that required the posting of a nearly $60,000 bond just to allow the appeal to be heard. Uh, this is just one matter out of the thousands of procurements issued in the state on a yearly basis. And this does not allow for oversight. Uh, even more backward, the more public money's at stake, the less possibility there is for oversight. Um, again, so this is just a conforming amendment to include safeguard language that should have been included in the measure two years ago. Uh, Hawaii is the only state that requires a bond that does not have this language. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone else here to testify on this measure? Danny, did you want to? Uh, Ryan, I do have one question for you. Uh, members, any other questions? I assume. I think you, I'm not sure if it was in a conversation with you. It might've been in a conversation with someone else. I'm not going to hold you to it.
Okay.
But I thought someone told me at one point that under the current law on appeal, if you post a bond, you lose that bond, kind of win or lose. Is that correct?
That's not correct. Currently, you get that bond back if you do win.
Okay.
Um, the issue is with the amount being so high, a lot of firms are not willing to even risk that amount.
Okay, so if you lose, you lose the bond. If you win, you get the bond back. But it's so high that it's acts as a deterrent.
Finances for smaller companies, uh, included, they, they cannot afford to even put up that amount of money.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Members, any other questions? Okay, if not, let's recess for decision-making. Recession. Okay. Okay, reconvening the Committee on Labor and Government Operations for the 9:30 AM agenda. We are still in Conference Room 309. All right, first up, we've got SB 193, SD 1, relating to the State Fire Council. Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is. I will be noting in the committee report that this has a clean, effective date. Any questions or comments, committee members? If seen none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, we're voting on Senate Bill 193, SD 1. The Chair's recommendation is to pass unamended. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Capella?
Aye.
Representative Martinez?
Aye.
Representative Sayama?
Aye.
Representative Tam?
Aye.
Representative Alcos?
Aye.
Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next up, we have SB 360, SD 2, relating to family leave. I want to thank all the testifiers and the committee for the good discussion we had on this measure. I did look into rolling back this bill to the original bill, but there were issues with it with the original bill, namely, if we went by the 2019 report, the lack of personnel, the lack of creating a new division within DLIR. I know DLIR testified today that they would need about 100 people to implement this program as well. That number does seem high, but I do agree that it's going to be more than probably the five or three that some other testifiers were saying. I don't think we need a new study for this. I think we've done a lot of studies. I think it is time to start creating more concrete implementation steps if we are going to pass paid family leave. I am not sure what the appetite is in the Senate for paid family leave, but judging by the, judging by the SD 2, they might not be ready for it yet. So Chair's recommendation is going to be to defer this measure. Again, I don't want to do another study, but we do have a number of resolutions coming through this committee that set out the kind of working group that I wanted to change this bill to anyway. I am going to be trying to involve the business community as well as the advocates and DLIR to, during the interim, create concrete steps to implementing paid family leave, if that's possible. We are going to be looking at the economic ramifications, too, the cost of the employer, the cost of the employee, in addition to other things, including the structure and the payment breakdown. But we will be using, and we will be using the 2017 and 2019 reports. That being said, Chair's recommendation is to defer this because I do not think we need another study for this, and it seems like a bit of a waste of money. Any questions or comments, members? Okay. So Chair's recommendation is to defer. SB, moving on to SB 435, SD 1, relating to Public Works. We are going, Chair's recommendation is to adopt DLIR's proposed amendments. Members, any questions or comments on this bill? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, voting on Senate Bill 435, SD 1, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Is anyone voting with reservations or nay? Seeing none, I'll chair all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Moving on to SB 576, SD 3, relating to government. I spoke with the bill's creator, and the intent of the bill, and I appreciate the comments in the testimony, the intent of the bill was never to make it so we don't know who is associated with this information. So the phrase personally identifiable information was probably the incorrect one to use. We are going to be replacing that with the phrase sensitive personal information, and I borrowed a little bit from the court rules for discovery for personal information. So sensitive personal information will include social security numbers, dates of birth, names of minor children, bank investment, bank or investment account numbers, credit card numbers, medical or health records, and social services reports. I am going to be putting in some restrictions on social security numbers and birth dates if the birth date needs to be, or social security number does need to be included in the name of minor children, so we'll be redacting those up to a certain digits, or if it's a name of a minor child, we'll be just including the initials of the minor child. I do want to put a burden on departments to make a good faith effort to redact sensitive personal information so that the rest of the document can be made public. I don't want any sensitive personal information on the document to mean that the entire document cannot be released. So departments will need to make a good faith effort to redact to the extent possible to make it available for public release. Members, any questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, voting on Senate Bill 576, SD 3, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Anyone voting with reservations or nay? Seeing none, Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next up is SB 811, SD 2, relating to demographic data. Chair's recommendation is to insert language that departments are not required to publicly report data if they are prevented from doing so by federal or state laws. But again, the departments do need to make a good faith effort to redact that inappropriate information or legal information, information not available for disclosure to the extent that the data can be made available to the public. Any questions or comments? Okay, if not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, voting on Senate Bill 811, SD 2, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Anyone voting with reservations or nay? Seeing none, Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Next up, we have SB 1082, SD 1, relating to public parking spaces. So Section 2, we're going to revise the language to make it clear that the reports required in this section are not required after the program is implemented. We are going to make this only applicable to state and county-owned parking lots, and I want to specify that state and counties, on a per-parking-lot basis, can choose to stop accepting cash at that particular parking lot at their own discretion, but not be forced to do so. I believe the language already has, I'm sorry, I believe the bill already has language on allowing them to continue to accept cash as well, if they so choose as well. Members, any questions or comments? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, voting on Senate Bill 1082, SD 2, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Anyone voting with reservations or nay? Seeing none, Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. Last bill on the agenda, SB 1135 relating to procurement. Chair's recommendation is to get a little more skin in the game. We are going to be, the bill currently allows the subtraction of administrative costs from the bond. We are going to double that, so it'll be minus two times the administrative costs to give a little more scaling on the amount taken out and to also allow the recruitment of administrative costs and hopefully the improvement of the whole administrative system by this extra funding. Members, any questions or comments? Okay, see none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Members, voting on Senate Bill 1135, the Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Anyone voting with reservations or nay? Seeing none, Chair, all members vote aye. Your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you, members. We are adjourned.